Where the water is not draining properly. This deed says that, and you can all read it. Says that the Oakville Fire District has a right of way to their property to maintain that pipe. That's what the deed says, okay? The answer I got when I mentioned I'm in my backyard with a bunch of people that came to visit was that, oh, we don't want to go back that far. Well, yeah, I do. Okay, I've 42 years with this problem. And all I hear is, no, it's not our problem, not our problem. Well, it's not my problem. Nobody told me when I bought that house that there was a problem. Okay, now, we were also told that we were going to get that part of the pipe is definitely clogged. That that part of the pipe was going to be blown out by some machine, I guess, that the town had purchased or whatever. Then they told us, oh, we can't do that because you don't have pipes, you have culvert. Well, my deed says pipe. Today, I listened to the September 9th meeting of the Conservation Commission. I just told you they were going to blow out the pipe. The truth is that Paul Jessel did not want the town to blow out the pipe because it would mean too much liability for the town. That's what they said at this meeting. So that was baloney. Then my friend and I went to Public Works, I believe it was, and talked to some of the guys up there. And they said, oh, yeah, you know, town manager's trying to get FEMA. We had talked about that. But we'll pay 75% and you guys will each pay 25. No, no, I've already paid a fortune to have my basement done by they all know, Janeski, and I'm still getting water now with these storms that we've been having this year. I have sandbags all over my back. I can't even use my home. Now, how would you all feel if your home was like that? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Michael McBrer, Karen's husband. Just a couple things that she missed.
Excuse me, it's really hard for us to understand with the masks. So if you could get close to the mic, that helps a little. That's one wonder.
Just a couple of points that my wife missed. Since we've had this water in the backyard, the fence, the six-foot vinyl fence that we have in the backyard, three sections have been blown out. There's been a rut from the continuous water running that has now brought the ground down to the edge of the pipe. Actually, Joe didn't mention it, but part of the fence, the stockade fence that they had to block their property is also blown up. Now, I'm sitting here and I've never been to one of these meetings before. And I look up and I see working for you. And I'm, my question is, when? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Donna Huthabanco at 237 Ball Farm, we're right on the side of Joe's. And that is all the water comes out of. It fills the entire backyard and comes down the driveway, goes into the street, crosses the other side where the barber shop and the tile places. And then it goes down Buckingham to Main Street, probably cuts in over there at the condominiums there on Falls Terrace. And then it just continues to go down. It's not a, it's not a property owner problem. This is a town problem. This water is way too much every time it rains, just a little bit. Or when you get these heavy rains that come in, this is like this every single time. And it's not a property owner problem, it's a town problem. There's so much water, it's unbelievable. It blew out the driveway last January or last December. And we just had part of the driveway fixed in April. That cost us $23.50 to have that section of the driveway fixed. And then in July, it blew out another section of the driveway where this water runs. And, and then that was on the 17th of July. Brought it down maybe about that much. And then we got the two hurricanes and now the whole, in the corner of the driveway where it comes out of the driveway is about this, this deep. And I just have this big hole crater which looked like a bomb went off. Every time it rains, the basement floods. I have to call the fire department. The last time we had to call the fire department to help pump out the basement, they were there from 10:00 a.m. until 5:30 p.m. And we have two sub pumps that are constantly running during this whole thing. And in fact, the sub pump is still running because it's taken up groundwater. This water is coming from somewhere and it's not just because of my backyard. So that's all I want to say. Something needs to be done. And I appreciate everything that the town's trying to do. It's just I don't know what they're doing because nobody said anything yet.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? All right, we will close public participation and move on in the agenda to regular meeting.
I moved to approve the regular meeting minutes from July 19th, 2021.
Are there any corrections or additions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Is there anyone opposed? The one that's abstaining? We have one abstention in the motion and pass.
I moved to approve the regular meeting minutes of August 16th, 2021.
Is there a second? Mr. Tallick seconded. Does anyone have any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor of the regular meeting minutes of August 16th, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining?
I'm abstaining.
I abstain.
Two abstentions and the motion. Moving on to chairman's comments. First thing is we have, thank you note from Mr. Raza for a gift that was sent on behalf of the council members. And he acknowledged that to us. The next thing, the town received approximately $6 million from the Federal American Rescue Plan Act. And the town council formed a committee to develop a plan for the use of the funds. So far, the committee members are town council members, myself and Mr. Ramsey, community members, Jean King, Alan Nickel, and Eric Markowitz. Town staff, we the town manager, Mark Ramo, the assistant town manager, finance director, Susan Sapon, water and sewer superintendent, Ben Kep, deputy fire chief, James Demarest Jr., and the economic development coordinator, Joseph Seacrest. We would like Rachel, if you're free to serve on the committee, to ask you to do so also.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So the town manager will be sending out contact information, trying to find a mutually convenient date for all of those people to have our first meeting so we can begin looking at the funds and how they're going to be allocated. We had questions from town resident with regard to several issues at the last meeting. One was, will the year-end adjustments on the 2021 budget be updated? Yes, they're done at what at time. So that the $2,838,000 and any other adjustments will show. What was the total cost of the renovation of this building to become our town hall? The total cost was $11,96,251.68. And the question was asked, what was the cost to move out of Depot Square and other town buildings to come here? And there was no cost because it was done by town employees and the highway department. So that cost was not, not tracked as a, as a source. Another question was, was the monthly rent for the Sunset Grill paid? And yes, it has been, and it was received by the treasurer, town treasurer, and deposit it. And if you would like the account number, I'll be happy to provide that to you separate. Lastly, after the public hearing we had and the allocation of the over $2 million to the board of ed, there was a lot of discussion and a lot of comment and suggestions about what people knew, when they knew it, and how much they knew. So in trying to be very transformative to the town, the board of ed chair and I talked and we decided that as soon as they knew something, they would tell us, inform us. But formally, at least every quarter, but if anything happened in the interim, that we would be to be advised. To show you how tight we are keeping to that commitment. At Fata Knight, I got an email with information that is going forward to a board of ed subcommittee finance meeting this evening. And it deals with increased special ed costs. Those of you that listened last year or were involved in that additional funding that had to be made, remember that a lot of it was because steved a large influx of students that needed special services during last year. You need, oh, that after July 1 of this year, when the budget started, we've received another large gearing number of families that have moved into town. As many as last year. They are working very diligently to identify all the services all of those students will need. And us off how much of the services required can be done in-house. And potentially, how much reimbursement will be coming back because there is reimbursement from special ed so that they could have a handle. Might be unanticipated costs. All that's broke, being broken down tonight for the finance committee. And it will be in writing, I assume by the end of the week, for the public to look at the actual numbers. But I would say we're talking probably unanticipated in the excess of a quarter of a million dollars so far. Okay. That good news, I'll turn it over to the town manager for his report. Sue's got one more.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the Quarter Town Town Council, September 2021 meeting, Mark Ramo, town manager. Just to address the issue at Buckingham and Ball Farm regarding the water. The amount of damage is devastating for the residents in that area. And just to respond to some of the questions or concerns that they have, the town has not been able to accommodate the requests 100%. We have responded to all the calls. I've been out there three or four times to evaluate what's been going on. There is an awful water and sewer notation on the deed. I did give that to our town attorney and I asked him to review that. He has told me several times that there is no responsibility on the town to fix this drainage issue. That being said, I did take it a step further and I've done some research and I was able to locate a FEMA grant which would cover up to 75% of the repairs. I've asked our engineering department to on behalf of the residents to apply for this grant. It's not something that they can apply for it on their own. It's something that they can work as almost a past town, a water town. And we're in the process of doing that. The, the date that I had asked them to get this application in was for the October 30th. First, that is the second to last deadline. They are working to meet that request. If not, we have another, we have until January 1st to submit another request. So if we're not able to meet that 31st, we will get it in from January 1st. Not that we're guaranteed that money. As far as the issue with the culvert being blocked, I did authorize highway to go in with our truck, back truck, that, that, okay, to go in and clean the line up. The problem was the back of the culvert is approximately five and a half feet tall. So they sent an action, a highway person into the culvert and he walked up to the blockage area. It's the blockage is so great that the truck is not capable of taking care of that. To ask a highway personnel to physically take that dam out would put his life at risk. And I chose not to take that chance. The 75-25% split to repair, I don't recall that. There was an offer when this first happened and I wanted to try and solve this for the residents. We had offered to they have in the past, we've offered to provide pipe to fix it. But the residents would have to come together and and give the additional cost to make that correction. That wasn't something that they were interested to do at the time. Well, I can, just to sum it up, I understand their frustration. They've had some destruction to their homes. It's not their fault at this point either. We've had a tremendous amount of rain and we're doing our best within the guidelines of the responsibility of the town to solve the problem for them.
Wait a minute, you can't speak out.
If you have any questions.
And, and Paul has looked into the deed and all of the property.
Yes, I've asked a couple of times because I have been presented with the deeds that the residents have come up with and I've asked the review that he still feels very strongly there's no responsibility on the town to fix this problem.
Okay, well, I do, do remember at least 10 or 12 years ago at a public works meeting when we had the same issue.
Can we clarify this?
Yes, certainly.
Mr. Town Manager, is there a way that the 25% that our own town, our department can replace at this point? And what are we talking about for cost to replace at these points? It was an estimate that was given to be engineered without taking measurements. They figured the cost to repair this is going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars. From outside agents. From outside agents, yes. The, the problem that we run into is that if we were to go on private property and do this type of work, we then become response project number one. And number two, how do we say no to the next resident who asks for this type of fix? So it's for the town, it's at the line up, you don't want to set precedent to go in on privately.
Through the chair, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
First. Sorry, first, the culvert itself, who put in the culvert originally? Do we know who actually installed it?
I'm going to have to ask our highway department supervisor. I'm not sure. Yes, please.
Yeah, I, I think it would be important to find out who they, who installed it when it was installed. That's the first question. I have a couple of follow-ups.
Just to clarify that the culvert is not where the which is the blockage is actually on the private property in a pipe that is reduced down to how many, how big is the pipe on the property?
It'd be a 36 inches in diameter.
Was the pipe installed by the same people that installed the culvert? Was it installed as this?
We believe the pipe was installed in the previous, by the previous homeowner.
Okay.
Not Mrs. Huthabanco, someone a long time ago. I think they, what they had at one time is they had an open channel, an open culvert that ran through the backyard and it ran to a header wall, which is where the fence got blown out. I believe right below that header wall is where the transition was from pipe to the header wall, which and then starts to exist, the culvert runs underneath ordinary Joe's. Right there is where the blockage is. They pipe Right there is where the blockage is. They piped. The culvert in the backyard to make a nice smooth backyard, so maybe it's whatever, but they put pipe in the ground. And when they put the pipe up against the old header wall, that's right where the blockage is because it's a round pipe going up against a square culvert. And the blockage is actually sticks and blocks because we walked up inside on the ordinary Joe's and looked at it. So it's not something that you could be, you could clean up with our back truck. It's not something that can be jet rodded. It's something that either has to be dug down and taken out manually and the pipe replaced. Or the other option, which is much more dangerous, like Mr. Ramo had said, you climb up underneath ordinary Joe's and start pulling out those sticks and branches one by one. Until you release all the water, but you do that and you take the chance of getting washed down the culvert yourself. Correct. Yes. I believe that the last three rainstorms in particular, starting July seventeenth and the last one was September second. They've been above and beyond the amount of water that we've had in the size of the storm. There has been flooding in the past. If the more blockage you get in that pipe, the more it comes down. It's like an old oil filter. The more dirt that gets in it, the less it's going to get through it. So at this point, it's probably, I would guess ninety percent blocked. There's very little water coming through there. Most of it runs out, out of the pipe and over the ground.
Jeff, I know public works meetings of at least ten years.
You get increasing amounts of rain every year, so this is going to become a larger and larger problem. On the seventy-five twenty-five, I don't know if I've addressed this question too, but then the seventy-five twenty-five repair cost, obviously we're talking about seventy-five percent. Towards this FEMA grant. The twenty-five percent remaining, we're still probably talking in hundreds of thousands of dollars that would be. Be absorbed by cost. This is something that the residents themselves would have to pay for. Is that?
That would be the intent of this grant is that we would. We can ask the residents to agree to cover that twenty-five percent. I don't think it would be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars on that twenty-five percent cost share. Is say two hundred thousand dollars, you know, would be a fifty thousand dollar cost share. You know, that we would look and I'm continuing to look daily on all other grants that possibly we can apply for to fix this.
I suppose maybe the question should be because it seems to me this is something greater than just the residents is obviously as they flood into Buckingham Street and flood into the. Public areas. That this, is this something that can be looked into in terms of what the town could cover, a percentage at least? The very least of some of this extra twenty-five percent cost. This is assuming that they get approved the FEMA grant in the first place. If such a grant is not approved, then we're kind of still looking at this problem as being something that isn't resolved. And it's going to be far too expensive for the residents themselves to pay for to repair.
I think that your thought process is very similar to what mine was when I first went down there the first day and looked at the damage is that we want to fix it. For the residents. Again, it's very sobering to talk to the town attorney. And come to the realization that if we do it for one, we're going to be responsible and how do we say no to the next? That's the hard. Part.
True, that's true, but I think you also, there's an ancillary to it and that is what affects. Public areas in terms versus what affects just private areas. So if somebody's private basement or private land is flooding. And it's something that has to do with their own property, et cetera, or several properties, that's one thing. But when the water is now coming down Buckingham Street. Flooding down the street like a waterfall, like a river. That could affect downstream, if you will, as well. Then it's enhances that problem and I think it. Yes, we could always look at the what-if kind of situations like that, but I would, I would venture to say that there's a public safety question here too with this, so. But something that I think maybe we ought to be looking into a little bit as well.
I felt that and I've explained that to the town as well, the town attorney, I mentioned the public safety issue because I am concerned with the amount of flooding that. Takes place in the upper Buckingham Street area by Ball Farm and then in addition down in the lower area by. Hillside is that it is a public safety issue or could be potentially with the amount of rains that we're receiving.
Well, that's where, that's my, and again, it's maybe a personal opinion to maybe a little more than it should be, but. Given that it's, it affects the public at large, it, whether or not we're quote unquote responsible for it in that legal sense, it may be something.
Do you have any other questions?
No, I got, that's all I got.
Would you like a written opinion from the town attorney?
Very definitely, we need that. Yeah. And I'd be interested to find out what the FEMA grant is going to cover. Not only just financially, but. Actually, so that we know what work is left to be done. And we can estimate what the cost of that work might be.
Okay, I mean, I won't be able to identify that.
Obviously, you're not going to have that overnight.
Right. Okay.
Do you have anything else in your report?
Of course I do. We'll pick it as quick as possible. Just update, Taft School has made an unrestricted contribution to the town as they do every year in the amount of a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, reflecting the increase of five thousand dollars from last year. In your packet is a memo from Lisa Carew advising that Thompson Savings Bank approved the grant application submitted by Mrs. Carew in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars for entertainment at the Watertown Fall Festival. Just like to thank the Director Carew for taking you to apply for that grant. I've scheduled FOIA training. It's scheduled for Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one at six thirty. At the Town Hall, Town Council Chambers. This training is open to the public, town employees, council members and commissioners. Currently, we have nineteen participants and we will record the training so that employees can view it on work time. If you're not able to attend and would like to submit a question, please email that question and I can get the answer the night of the training if you're unable to make it. I'm also in discussions with the Law Office of Pullman and Colme. To develop a training program surrounding Robert's rules and its application for. For Commissioners and Council Members. Steel Brook Greenway, we put out for requests for quotes. We've received all our quotes and distributed to the committee members for their review. That was for the engineering design project for Steel Brook Greenway. Convention is currently scheduled for November thirtieth and December first at the weekend sun. If any of the council members are interested in attending, please let my. We have a tentative agreement with the White Collar Union. The the union leadership will be presenting it to the union body and we will get it for shortly. Communication, a union talks are ongoing. Public Works Department, I want to announce that I've made an offer and the offer has been accepted for the position of Department of Public Works. I wanted to announce his name tonight. But he asked to wait another week just so he can inform his employee that he will be resigning and taking the job here. So the anticipation started, start later for Department of Public Works will be October of this year. Our organizational chart changes have been made to the organizational chart. Attorney Jessel is reviewing the changes and anticipate forwarding those changes for your approval at the October fourth council meeting. The Fire Department on December seventeenth, twenty twenty, the Watertown Fire Department members responded to a structure fire at five seventy Buckingham Street Oakville. While working diligently together. They saved the life of Margaret Anderson, who had been trapped in the structure, rendered unconscious and unresponsive. Chief Bromley nominated responding members to the Connecticut Firefighters Association for a lifesaving award. And on nine nine twenty twenty-one, the nomination was accepted by the committee. The following members Deputy Chief James Demiris, Captain CJ Palmer, Lieutenant David Hart, Lieutenant Joseph Lafranera. Lieutenant Kevin Pro, firefighter Gary Adams and firefighter Scott Traver have been awarded a lifesaving award and were honored at the Connecticut. Convention on Saturday, September eighteenth. So congratulations to those members and thank you for doing what you do. Two additions that came in right before our meeting, just to let you know, we have a bat infestation in the Town Hall. We did get one quote to try and get rid of our bats and we're at the seven thousand five hundred dollar mark.
And where might they be located?
They may be quite a few above us.
Oh, nice. Thanks.
But the majority are on the. The right-hand side of the building as you look at the building. So we are going to get a couple more quotes to see if we could bring that price down. Also, when we did do the Town Hall project, we did not replace all the gutters. So we are having a problem with the gutters on the rear of the building, which is creating. Is part of the reasons why we're having some water issues in the basement. So we are getting quotes on those items to not only cap them, but re. Place. Other than that. But pretty quiet.
Thank you. Let's move on to the agenda item, new business item A.
I moved to add to the agenda item EF to consider a bid waiver for the purchase of a multi-hog machine from DC Bates Equipment Company. Utilizing the Sourcewell Government Bidding and Purchasing Program for an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifteen thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adding the item to the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
I moved to appoint Edward Norton, six six nine Buckingham Street Oakville, as an alternate member of the Conservation Commission for a term to expire January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. This appointment is to fill the unexpired, unexpired term of Philip Mailer.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Comment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
I moved to appoint Amanda Manfor. Watertown as a member of the Park and Recreation Commission for a term to expire January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. This plan is to fill the unexpired term of Michelle Wallace.
And we need a second on this, please.
Second.
Anyone have any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? Seeing on the motion passes unanimously.
I moved to support the Watertown Land. Or application to the state of Connecticut for a grant to assist in funding the purchase of forty acre parcel of land bounded by Link Field and Francine Roads. For open space and also set a special town meeting to be held on Monday, October fourth, twenty twenty-one at seven P M. Watertown Town Hall to consider an appropriation from the Open Space Fund and the amount of fifty thousand dollars for the purchase of forty acre. Parcel bounded by Link Field and Francine Roads. Such purchase would be for open space.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Sangree, is that you in the back? Would you like to make some comments or give us any information on this request?
Okay, hello. We want to purchase the Gustafson portion of Pec Swamp. Pec Swamp is a very unusual and very large swamp in the north end of Tom and it drains into Wigwam Reservoir. So I have a letter here. I don't know how much detail you want me to go into, but it's from the Superintendent of Waterberry Water Company. And one thing he says is Wigwam is one of five drinking water reservoirs used for raw water. And it is the source of potable water for Waterberry. It is also our least favorable in regard to overall water quality. Acquisition are buying Pec Swamp. Will help to protect the watershed area surrounding the Wigwam Reservoir and should help to improve the overall raw, raw water quality. So there's one reason we would like to purchase this land. There are other reasons. I've heard people tonight talking about. Terrible damage from rainstorms. And one thing that swamps do is they hold rainwater and let it drain gradually rather than. Come down the great big cascade that makes problems for people. Pec Swamp does that very well and we would like to keep it as. Possible. So that there will be less climate influenced flooding that Watertown has already suffered. Other reasons are that it's a chunk in a very large area of open space. We own land already on plunges and and. Francine Road. That's about twenty-six acres and that's partly a hayfield, but it's also part of Pec Swamp. Gustaf's property is preserved by the State Department of Agriculture. Then the Water Company land is the next big chunk. I think that's about seven hundred acres. And then the state, Matituck State Forest is even larger chunk of open space. So this creates a very large corridor for wildlife that need a lot of space to move about it. It's also helpful for migratory birds if they have. A bit of open space to move through so that they don't have to encounter window strikes or. Houses and development and people around. So for those reasons, we would like to purchase this piece of Pec Swamp. The ask, the appraised value is a hundred twenty thousand and we're applying. CEP for an open space grant. If we get that grant, it's usually about forty percent of what. The value is. And so we're asking the Town Council for fifty thousand. There'll still be. Further expense to us and there are things like title searches and title insurance appraisal costs, surveying costs. Which are not covered by the grant, but the Open Space Fund right now has, I think it's two hundred and six thousand. Given by developers in lieu of land. When they are subdividing for development. And so we are asking for a quarter roughly of that fund. To help pay for this purchase, which I think will benefit the town and future generations. And land that the Land Trust owns is owned in Perry, so. It's never going to be developed and it's never going to be used for anything except for. Open space and it can be used for educational purposes or recreational purposes, but it will never have any commercial. Use or housing or anything like that.
Thank you, Gil. Appreciate that explanation. Anyone have any questions?
I do. Through the chair. You mentioned an appraisal for one twenty.
Yeah.
Two questions. Who did the appraisal? Who paid for the appraisal?
Well, the Land Trust paid for the appraisal and it was done by Rob Bartos from Canton. I don't know familiar with him. He is someone that the state likes to work with. And when we've gotten these grassed, we've had to have two appraisals. They've changed the rules now. So you only need one, but then you need an appraisal review so that another approved appraiser looks. so that another approved appraiser looks at the first guy's work to see if it makes sense and if he has suggestions. And the person who has done that is Tom Henry. And he's formerly from Connecticut. He now lives in South Carolina. He had a couple of suggestions.
Thank you.
Yes. Anyone else?
I just had a quick question just on the actual parcel land location. And is this on the north side of Francine Road? Or is this south side of Francine Road, Francine and Linkfield?
I would call it on the west side, the west side of Linkfield. And if you went down Francine Road, which is a dirt road, you'd be heading west.
No, okay.
And then it would be to the south of Francine Road.
Okay.
And it's very extensive in a neighborhood where there's a lot of development. So I counted the houses. And there's 65 houses before you get to that piece. But then there's also Smith Pond Road, Joshua's Town Road. So there are many, many people in that neighborhood who probably wouldn't go on an extensive trip through the state forest looking for birds. But if it were right in their neighborhood and people, a birder from Watertown named John Marshall has, has been to this property several times. He's seen eagles there. He's seen metal arcs who are on the threatened list. He's seen bobble eggs and many others. So it really is a birder's paradise.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Now we have a presentation by one of our own.
Madam Chairwoman, I'd like to introduce Lauren Laporta. She's administrative assistant for the Town Manager's Office. Lauren actually took chairmanship of the committee to set up the website for us. And I would just like to say thank you publicly for all the hard work she did. She really did a wonderful job. The other members of the website committee were Kim Calabrese, our Fire Marshal, Lisa Doll and our Town Clerk. Locher, an administrative assistant in the Assessor's Office. Carrie Godfrey, Assistant Parks and Recreation Director. Megan Giuliano, Assistant Finance Director. Carla Hamel, Tax Collector. Anthony Montagno, Foreman, Highway Department. And Joe Seacrest, our Economic Development. So again, Lauren, thank you and give them a great tour.
Microphone where you are.
Here you are. Okay, so just to give you a timeline. The website committee began this process in the middle of March. The new website was launched the second week of August. During that timeframe, the committee went through different town websites and looked over designs and features. We also went through the whole design process. So a new website with a whole new website company. So we didn't even use, we weren't using the old website. So everything was brand new. Content was migrated, content was updated and added. Others went through website training. After the website training, the website was handed over to us and then the committee polished up the website. Next slide, please, Mike. Basically, the next slides are going to go over the style and format and the features. New versus old. Next slide, please. So this is the homepage of the new website. If you're familiar with the old website, you can see right off the bat that it's, this new website is more updated, pleasing, bright and eye catching. The webpages are all formatted the same and uniform font. The last two might not be a big deal, but on our end, it is a big deal. Next slide. So here's examples of the Board and Commission agendas and minute pages. The bottom left is the new website and, and the to be old. Right now in the new website, we have slots for each agenda, motion, minutes and cancellation. So on the old website, there were no slots for that. So it was up to the Board and Commission who was posting the minutes to put those in, which often led to not uniformed website pages. Slide please. This is in the whole of our old homepage. It's very busy. It's kind of overwhelming. Things that are important are very, it's also was outdated. Next slide. This again is the new homepage. It's modern and updated. It's visually pleasing. The top where the picture is, is actually a slide toolbar to show off pictures. And there's a lot of great pictures of the town featured on that toolbar. Next slide. These are, this is an example of the department pages. So the left is the old website and the new website. All department pages are now formatted the same way. Each department page has a contact bar at the very top. And in that contact bar, there's the address, the phone and the fax and also the hours. So untitled information, every employee in that department as well as general information, which gives an overview of what that depart does. There's also related links on the left-hand side for each department. So that's a good tool for visitors to use to find things that they might need throughout each department. The old website, related links were kind of just spread throughout the page and users had to search through the page to find what they need. Next slide. So some new features, the homepage alert bar, which it's kind of hard to see. Mike, can you move the zoom toolbar? Thank you. So this is something that can be toggled on and off. It's actually been very helpful. So the first week after we launched was when we had all that rain. So we kind of alerted visitors to check the event boxes for a more elaborate a more, more elaborate information on how to be prepared for the storm. It also can be used for reminders and in emergency situations. There's also the quick links toolbar, which is right here. So the agendas and minutes, registered to vote, absentee ballots, viewer packs, the GIS system, e-notify signup, which is something that visitors can sign up to get notification. Employment that can be changed and we can add more quick links if we wanted to. That's nice because it makes items easy to find and it helps users get to important pages quickly. Next slide, please. So the next feature is actually an ADA accessibility menu. It's on the homepage and it's throughout all the other department pages. It allows visitors to change the contrast, enlarge the text, highlight links, text spacing, a larger cursor, line height and align text. Another new feature, there's integrated social media sharing. So if we're featuring something on the website, we can share it directly to the town's social media pages. There's also documents on demand. One more, two more, Mike. So there's also documents on demand. That's actually a third-party addition to the website. It's basically where all of our archived minutes and agendas are going to be on the old website. I mean, we had back, you know, all the way back on one page, which could kind of be chaotic. On the new website, it's just going to be the current year agendas and minutes. And then visitors are able to search documents on demand for the archived minutes and agendas. I actually just sent another batch. So I'm hoping in a few weeks that should be up and running. There's also, so as I mentioned, the formatted agendas and minutes pages. There's a larger calendar and events view. And there's an event box for each page, which is shown here. So manager page, I have stay up to date with town happenings and linked to the town's social media pages. The town clerk, for example, can use that box for June, which is dog licensing month. And she can link to an application. Next slide. Just some feedback. I created a Google form. We received a lot of verbal feedback, all great. And you can see here, we got fives and fours for the digital. Next slide. Thank you. Question?
And we should, we should mention any council person, if you have any change of address, phone number that needs updating. We need to let Lauren know, not to let that pass so that Thank you. And we have the next item on the agenda for a motion.
I moved to approve a resolution authorizing an appropriation in the amount of $20,830 for tax refunds.
Second.
Are there any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone abstaining or opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously.
I moved to approve a resolution authorizing tax refunds.
I'll second it.
Again, any questions? Corrections, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. And to the items that we added?
I moved to approve a bid waiver for the purchase of a multi-hogging machine from DC Bates Equipment Company for the Public Works and Parks Department utilizing the Sourcewell Government Bidding and Purchasing Program for an amount not to exceed $15,495 as approved through the budget as a lease purchase.
And we need a second.
Second.
Do we have any questions?
I have a question. The purpose for this is what the purpose for this is snow removal? Is that correct? Okay. Is seeing something that's already in place or is this to, in addition to?
Iowa Superintendent. Yes, this is place, what we currently use, a skid steer loader with a snow blower attachment, which the snow blower attachment is no longer usable. Also, the skid steer is not the ideal machine to go on and off sidewalks with. This machine is more purpose-built for that. And it, it does come with different attachments. So it doesn't have to be used just for a snow blower or a snow plow.
It may be in the, what's the typical life expectancy of this type of machine?
15 to 20 years.
So this is a long-term investment back to something that'll be five years.
Correct. Yes.
Do we have any other, any of other of these or something like in our, in our?
Arsenal? No.
Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? The motion passes unanimously.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.